All right, call the meeting to order. Josh and I and Mark German will be excused. Jack Daly is a guest, Lois Leckman, welcome.
Thank you.
First item on the agenda, consideration of meeting minutes for May 21st, excuse me, May 12th, 2021.
I didn't read any minutes, so I'm out of this one.
Okay, does everyone feel that way?
I didn't have any for that one.
I didn't have any changes.
I'll make a motion, folks, up.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, Steve, you're going to recuse yourself.
What are we doing?
Minutes for May 12th.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so three yes, one abstention.
Yep.
That portion carries.
Good idea.
Consideration of meeting minutes for May 26, 2021. Does anyone have anything on that one?
Yeah. On line 179, Ian.
Okay.
And line 181 is talking about a performance bond. And line 184, sorry. There's two bonds related to this project. One is a performance bond related to the construction, one is a performance bond related to the ongoing maintenance and operations. I think we should eliminate the word performance because they're both performance bonds and it's very confusing. I don't know what words we used at the meeting, but for the minutes, those should say...
It wasn't the maintenance one I was talking about, it was the... I'm not sure why I called the other one, because you're right, the maintenance part was...
Well, I was confused because I think you were talking about the construction bond.
Right.
My comments related to the maintenance bond, it's the maintenance bond...
Well, line 181, you're talking about the maintenance bond.
I think...
I'm talking about the maintenance bond, I think Paul was talking about the construction.
Yeah, I mean, I think 185, mine was about the construction bond. I think 185 is about, 184 still, but Rick was saying that he wasn't going to ask for the construction bond to be returned until the planning board satisfied.
Correct.
So I think they're both related to the construction bond.
I think the...
So why don't we just either call it performance bonds or bonding?
Bonding, yes.
Line 178.
Well...
No, I said the construction bond.
Yeah, I think, because I think we should distinguish between them.
Why don't we put a little preamble there at 178 as to which, what's what? Just say there are two bonds associated with this.
Paul Bowden, remember Bowden requested when the construction bond would be released? And then on 184, say that applicant Ellis stated he's not going to ask for the construction bond to be returned until the planning board satisfies.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Just change the word to construction.
Okay, and then in 181, that should say the maintenance bond.
Maintenance bond.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a good change.
I'll just make bonds plural on line 178.
Yep.
Performance bonds, okay, good.
Okay.
For the heading, heading.
There you go.
Excellent.
Works for me.
And I'll make a motion to approve with those directions.
All second.
All in favor?
Right.
Hi, anyone opposed? Right, portion carries. All right. Mark is here, welcome. Ray is here.
Can we do that?
Four.
He's not received it, so he's...
Carol.
Right, because you can't...
Well, we're not going to vote her any.
Well, no, it's only working, go ahead, think with the rules, you can't be...
I think we can allow it.
Oh, I don't know.
He has medical issues, so...
If he's got medical issues, then it's...
I think in general, if someone can't be here, we can vote that we will allow them to be present by video or telephone, but they have to be able to be heard by the public.
Yeah, and you have to state the reason why in the minutes when I read it. I was going to bring that tonight, too.
I mean, Peter can weigh in on this, too.
You are correct. I'm not sure if you have to state the reason why. I'll pull out the, I'll pull out 91A while we're talking, but it is allowed off-site attendance.
Okay.
Paul says the statute says you have to state the reason why, then he's probably right. I'll double check.
I think it's in the new governor's, that thing you sent to us.
Okay, so Ray's there, and I'm going to start off.
Okay.
A little powwow with Ray. So per your request, I invited town attorney Peter Malia, and also for the audience that's watching the thing, and town engineer Ray Corber to come to this meeting to help us understand how impact fees and/or exaction fees work and how they could help us fund some of the infrastructure improvements necessitated by development. In that for background, in 2004, the town adopted the impact fee ordinance that is part of the land use plan ordinance, and you have a copy of those pages in your packet. In 2008, the planning board came up with an estimated water impact fees that we refer to as bedroom impact fees, $500 a bedroom. And according to John Hettinger, who used to be on the planning board, the spreadsheet that is in your packet was created in 2008 to determine the future facility and dollar requirements based on what were determined at the time to be the numbers representative of the numbers of units built out as estimated by each of the respective developers at that time. He did not remember any sewage study being done. The estimate was made during the slump in the housing market. The financial crisis of 2008 went from about December of 2007 to June of 2009. And back in 2013, John Hettinger said the impact fees should be updated, especially based on the proposed additions to the in-season resort at South Mountain, Forest Bridge, the South Peak Resort, Village Center Hotel, which I assume is part of the Village, and Riverwalk. Currently, we have water and sewer tap fees, which are like, a little bit like water and sewer connection fees. We also have the bedroom impact fees of $500 a bedroom. And you have the spreadsheets that I made, well, two of them are the form that we use to fill out for applicants, but then I gave you a spreadsheet so you could see what each thing costs. And an applicant pays those fees once upfront when they apply for a land use authorization permit prior to constructing the bedroom or adding the fixtures that use water and sewer. And attorney Malia will talk to you about how the impact fees and exaction fees work and how they differ, and talk to you about how these are carryover from prior decisions made by the planning board. He gave you an article titled "Demystifying Impact Fees" by Christine Fillmore, who worked for the NA, the Hampshire Municipal Association. So you have that in your packet, too. And engineer Corber is our town engineer, and he's going to update you about the status of our water and sewer infrastructure. And you have the memorandum that you wrote on May 24th, and that is, has to do with the sewer. So I'm going to turn it over to Peter, who's going to...
Okay, first regarding remote attendance, it's 91 dash A colon 2 subsection 3. A public body may allow remote participation if in-person attendance is not reasonably Several other requirements apply. Each part of the meeting must be audible or otherwise discernible to the public at the location of the meeting. Any member participating remotely must identify the persons present in the, in the location from which the member is participating, and all votes must be by roll call. So that's right in the right-to-know law now, 91A.
Should I call the board to see if anyone objects to Mark participating remotely?
I think you can probably assume you've got unanimous consent for that. So the impact fee ordinance is in RSA 674 colon 21 subsection 5. It's a fairly lengthy statute. I'm not going to read the whole statute to you, you'll be happy to know, but I'll just hit on some highlights. So the statute says that an impact fee is an assessment imposed upon development, including subdivision, building construction, or other land use change in order to help meet the needs occasioned by that development for the construction or improvement of capital facilities owned or operated by the municipality. And then it gives a long list of the different types of capital facilities owned or operated by the municipality that you can consider as a planning board when you're deciding whether or not this development should be assessed an impact fee. You can assess an impact fee for water treatment and just distribution facilities, wastewater treatment and disposal facilities, sanitary sewers, stormwater, drainage and flood control facilities, municipal road systems and rights of way, municipal office facilities, public school facilities, the municipality's share of capital facilities of a cooperative school district, public safety facilities, solid waste collection, transfer, recycling, processing, and disposal facilities, public library, and public recreational facilities, not including public open space. So all of those things are fair game for, for impact fees. The amount of any fee shall be a proportional share of municipal capital improvement costs, which is reasonably related to the capital needs created by the development. So you have to try to determine what needs are actually created by the development. And the statute says that upgrading of existing facilities and infrastructure, the need for which is not created by new development, shall not be paid for by impact fees. So if you want to make some upgrades to any of those categories of capital facilities that I just mentioned, and, and those upgrades are not at all necessitated by the new development, you cannot impose an impact fee on that new development. It says that any impact fee shall be accounted for separately, shall be segregated from the municipality's general fund, may be spent upon order of the municipal governing body, and shall be used solely for the capital improvement for which it was collected. It says all impact fees imposed shall be assessed at the time of planning board approval of a subdivision plat or site plan. Impact fees shall be intended to reflect the effect of development upon municipal facilities at the time of the issuance of the building permit, and the fees shall be collected at the time of a certificate of occupancy, and if no certificate of occupancy is issued, impact fees shall be collected when the development is ready for its intended use. Finally, impact fees cannot be held indefinitely. They have to be refunded with any accrued interest within the amount of time established by the planning board, and in your ordinance, I think it's six years. If you don't, you got to use it or lose it within six years. And then it's, it's returned to the developer. So then it goes on to say that, you know, aside from the impact fee ordinance, a planning board can also require from the developer an exaction for the cost of off-site improvement needs to be necessary for the occupancy of any portion of, of the development. An off-site exaction means an improvement that's necessitated by a development which is located outside the boundaries of the property that is subject to the planning board's review. And this one is much more limited. An off-site exaction is limited to highway, highway drainage, or sewer and water upgrades pertinent to the development. So the, the exaction is sort of a one-time assessment against the developer for some sort of off-site improvement that's necessitated by the development. It doesn't go into a fund, you don't hold it for six years, it's sort of a one-time, you know, we need to fix this road which provides access to this hotel or whatever, and we need X number of dollars to do it, and so that's a, that's a one-time exaction, which is different from the impact fee. So finally, on the impact fees, within 60 days of the end of the fiscal year, any municipality having adopted an impact fee ordinance shall prepare a report listing all expenditures of impact fee revenue for the prior fiscal year, identifying the capital improvement project for which the fees were assessed, and stating the dates upon which the fees were assessed and collected. As Carol pointed out, Lincoln adopted, passed a warrant article in 2004 at the town meeting to adopt an impact fee ordinance. It's in your land use plan ordinance, it's a two-page impact fee ordinance, it's Article 6, section G, it tracks the statute that I just highlighted. And as we prepared for this meeting, Ray and Carol and I, you know, we did get the, from John Ahart, the, the finance director, we did get the town's annual report listing all impact fees being held by the town. I think that all of the impact fees being held by Lincoln are for the bedroom, bedroom tax, I believe. I think they're all for the same thing, Carol, the, the water, the water treatment cell.
Right.
In other words, I, I think that the planning board, you know, I think this has been a useful exercise to sort of refocus all of us on Article 6, section G. And, you know, for each development, we should consider that long list of items that the impact fee ordinance allows the planning board to assess an impact fee for, because I think the only thing we're using our impact fee ordinance for is the water treatment cell, and we could be using it for a much broader category of capital improvements. So, and also, I, I think that it's, the impact fee, because it was created so long ago, it was set up, and it's just kind of been on autopilot, and, and it seems to me like we don't really think about it too much at the planning board level. We go through the ordinance, we apply the ordinance to the project, we create our conditions of approval, and we don't really talk about the impact fee ordinance or the fact that when they do come, you know, when they're ready for, for their occupancy, they're going to be assessed this impact fee. We should probably just make it a condition of every approval that's going to be assessed this, this bedroom tax for the water treatment cell, and also consider whether or not we want to assess any other impact fees for other things. So I'll stop there, and I think Ray maybe wants to pick it up here.
Let me ask, if we have any questions?
Can...
May I approve?
There's a, there's a...
That's Mark.
Try it again, Paul.
My question was, can impact fees be assessed for currently approved projects? In other words, all the, all of the approvals that we have today on past projects and developments, are those able to be assessed, any kind of exaction or impacting?
No. All impact fees shall be assessed at the time of planning board approval of a subdivision plat or site plan. So the only impact fees that can be assessed will be the bedroom tax for the water treatment cell, which is a standard operating procedure in Lincoln and has been for many years.
So any new site plan reviews cases could be, impact fees could be charged?
Yeah.
And, and for, when I look at your, when I look at your demystifying impact fees, page 4 or 7, it says that planning board, the ordinance contains sufficient standards to guide the board in its assessment of the fees, including methodology and specific measurements for the board to consider. Our, our impact fee, although it's two pages long, really doesn't go to that level of specificity to, to be able to have any type of standard or methodology as to how you would charge for an impact fee.
I, I agree, and I asked actually Carol today if she was aware of, in, in the past, whether or not any planning, a prior Lincoln planning board had, had created any regulations along those lines, and it seems like the answer is no. So I will gather some examples perhaps from some other municipalities for us to look at. It seems to me that in Lincoln, the whole, the sole purpose of the impact fee ordinance back in 2004, and, and the manner in which it has been implemented has been solely for the purpose of water treatment cell, and that seems to be the only thing that the impact fee ordinance has been used for, and I think that there's quite a bit of detail in the forms that Carol shared with us. But we, we should, we should start using the impact fee, or at least consider using the impact fee for other capital improvements as well. So I'll see if I can gather up some other examples.
I would agree, and I think that the, you know, we need a little more, a little more detail. Also, also on the, on that lining of question about whether any charges can be levied on current projects, can off-site exaction fees be leveled on current projects if they come back in? And I guess more, more importantly to all of this is, what do you consider a current project? Projects that have been approved but have not been, nothing's been done, and for a certain amount of time, we're not considered active. I know that when it comes to water, and when it comes to sewer, again, I'm going to echo here, here. The sewer connection permit fee is rolling down for three years from the date of issue, and that's, that's for the state of New Hampshire, building, I mean, the state of New Hampshire Ministry of Rules. So anything that's three years old, it needs to be reapplied for, and I'm not sure that any, and I was going to ask Ray that, I'm not sure that, how many of the current permits and applications and approvals that we've given have current approvals from DES for sewer, sewer permits?
I might ask, but what do you say current project? You're talking about something where the master plan's been approved, and then they have come in for a site plan for each phase?
I'm talking about any project that, that has been approved.
But just basically, you know, they come through site, not just the master plan.
Right, they've, they've come through site, and I'll say, say South Peak. You know, their, their permits are only good three years.
So their master plan has been approved, but individual projects have to come in for site plan approval.
Right.
But there's some that have come in.
Some, right.
None of them three years ago.
But, but these permits are issued by the state, and then they have to reapply to the state of three years to, to get a extension, and then the extensions are for two years that time in. So I don't know, qualifies a, a development or a project as the current, once it's approved. If they don't, you know what I mean, how long do they have?
Yeah, I think it's, your, your question goes to the issue of vesting, and when you, the planning board approves a project, imposes conditions, the developer begins, you know, meets the conditions and begins construction. If, once they become vested, and there's a separate statute which deals with, you know, substantial completion within a five-year period, and there's a, there's sort of a, some guidelines to use to determine when a project becomes vested, but once it becomes vested, it's really not feasible for a planning board to impose any additional fees or costs upon a vested project because they have substantially completed it, and they have the legal right to finish it without the imposition of further fees or costs. If they're not yet vested, then they, you know, they could, I think they expose themselves to reapplication and additional, you know, planning board review for impact fees. I think it's a vesting issue.
Well, right.
A lot of these projects, which we've looked at in Lincoln, which have been substantially completed, have become vested, and have remaining unbuilt units, so it's really kind of difficult to impose additional fees upon them.
Yeah, so I guess I can answer my own question on that RSA, because on page four, it says, any exaction, both pursuant to this section, shall be assessed at the time of planning board approval of development necessitating an off-site improvement. So I guess an exaction is not clear either here, but, I mean, appropriate here either, but I did read somewhere, and I'm not sure it was here, that one of the recommendations that they have when it comes to impact fees and exactions is, as to how, how long period of time it takes in order to be vested. I mean, you know, if, if a project, and, and we should be able, according to be able to, I think, write that in our land use plan ordinance. Is that something that we, that we should include in there, as well as being a little more specific on the impact fee ordinance itself?
It's a, it's, it's a statute, I'll find it probably while Ray's talking, if he's about to take over, and I'll, when there's a break, I'll, I'll tell you what the statute is. I don't necessarily think you need to add the statute to your land use plan ordinance, you could reference it somewhere. Vest, you know, you could, you could refer, you could have a definition for vesting and just refer to the statute. 67439, I think it is, let's see, might have just found it. Every site plan approved by the planning board and recorded in the registry shall be exempt from all subsequent changes for a period of five years after the approval, and also if active and substantial development occurs within two years, then they become fully vested. So active and substantial development within two years.
What do you call substantial development? Is that a portion of the total project, or is it?
I can, I can just interject here a minute, Peter. So, so I think, Paul, what you're probably referring to was in our capacity assessment on the wastewater system, we did make a recommendation for the board's consideration about setting a time period for expiration of subdivision and site plan approvals, because we, you know, we work in a number of communities, and I think one of the communities we work in, I can't name, name them off the top of my head, but they, I think they have something in their ordinance that's basically states that any approved subdivision or site plan which, building permit has not been obtained within two years of the date of the original approval shall be considered void. So Peter would be more well-versed as to, you know, chapter and verses to where that, you know, shows up in statute, but I do know that some communities have that on their books.
That's where I did see that, thank you.
It's not defined, I've had, I've had cases, there've been a lot of cases in New Hampshire over whether or not, you know, a project is, has, has achieved active and substantial development. The statute says the planning board may, as part of its subdivision or site plan regulations or as a condition of approval, specify the threshold levels of work that shall constitute substantial completion of the improvements or active and substantial development. So unless a planning board specifies that, it's kind of a subjective, you know, I had a case where the guy had roughed in subdivision road and put in a couple of utility poles, but hadn't dug any foundations or done anything else, and the court agreed that that didn't qualify as sufficient amount of development to be, to be vested, so his subdivision had expired. So unless you define it, it's kind of a subjective case-by-case analysis.
But should, should we have something there so that if, if we needed an exaction fee, if we're talking about impact fees or exaction fees, wouldn't it be something good to have in our ordinance that, that, you know, says up until that point, we either can or cannot?
Well, again, impact fees and exaction fees are supposed to be assessed at the time of approval. That's the, that's the best time for a planning board to extract these fees from developers, is at the time of approval, as part of your conditions of approval. Once they get their notice of decision, your jurisdiction over them is, is usually, it ends there. Sometimes it doesn't end there, again, if they don't achieve vested status, they might come back to you, but you might never see them again, you might never have another opportunity. they might come back to you, but you might never see them again. You might never have another opportunity. So the best time to do it is at the time of approval, when they're in front of you. Um, and I think, um, defining substantial completion is kind of a case by case, development by development decision. I don't think there's a one size fits all for substantial completion or improvement.
Peter.
Two hotels. They, they're approved. They've been through the process. Do they have a permit? So they don't have a permit.
They're still working on meeting your conditions.
They're still working on meeting the conditions. So could either one of those still be assessed a, either exaction or impact fee?
No, you're done with them. One of them though just came back to you and got a, uh, got an extension of time to meet their conditions, right Carol? So the next time they come back, if you say no, we've given you two or three extensions already, you're done. Then their approval expires and then if they come back to you with a new application, obviously you'll have a new opportunity to impose impact fees.
Peter, just going back to that though, I thought the Fairfield Inn had a condition of approval related to them showing that there is sufficient sewer capacity in the line down main street and if not making it. So although that wasn't an exaction fee, if there's not, if that whatever eight inch pipe isn't big enough and it needs to be 12, that's on that.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that was a good condition of approval. Yes.
It is an exaction fee. It's just not specified because first of all, they either have to prove that it's big enough, which we don't think they can, or, or they put in a bigger pipe.
Right. So you, you addressed the issue. Um, you might not have addressed it in complete, you know, reliance on this particular statue we're talking about, but you addressed it legally and you addressed it otherwise.
Just include a dollar.
Peter, just saying, but we didn't know how much, how long, you know, 10 feet, 100 feet.
Peter, um, when, for instance, the Riverwalk Hotel went in, could the town have imposed that impact fee for new fire trucks due to the fact that that was the highest building in town? And the chief had to go out and buy a piece of equipment that would reach the fourth floor to take out visitors or guests in case of a fire?
I don't think you can have them pay for an entire fire truck, but, um,
Mentioned public safety.
Public safety facilities is definitely on the list. And it has to be, the amount of the fee shall be a proportional share of municipal capital improvement costs reasonably related to the capital needs created by the development. I guess if you feel like you can justify a development requiring its own fire engine, then maybe, but it seems like that might, that might be a little bit of a stretch to me, but, uh, maybe.
What about, um, again, the impact of, um, two new hotels coming into town on the need for additional cruises and, uh, public safety officials, personnel?
You could, yeah, you could ask the fire chief and the police chief, um, what sort of a, a, additional services will be required or equipment or vehicles or personnel will be necessitated by the development? And try to set a budget and try to, you know, you, I think the key if challenged in court is to, is for the judge to be able to see that you thought about it, you gathered information, you crunched numbers, you tried to make a reasonable decision based on the available information. And you didn't just pick a number out of thin air or say, you know, we need a $350,000 fire engine and let's have these guys pay for it. So as long as you can justify or have some evidence to justify the decision that you made and show the court that it was thoughtful and hopefully well reasoned, you know, you got a much better chance of being upheld.
In the former town, uh, excuse me, in the former state, Massachusetts that I came from, we had a law called linkage, an ordinance statewide. And you could allow a developer to increase density. And in return for increased density, the developer could pay, could pay for a negotiable item such as a new baseball field in town contribute to the local, uh, municipal, uh, sports teams and things like that. Are any of these items negotiable for something along that way?
Well, public recreational facilities are, are on the list for impact fees, not including public open space. So public recreational facilities, that's, um, kind of an interesting item to have on the list. You could, I, I, I guess, yeah, I, I guess you could sort of open up a discussion, uh, along those lines. Uh, I think if, um, the developer was willing to come to an agreement with the planning board and not fight it, then, and you know, that's always, when it's by agreement, it's all, it's always okay. But re, I don't know, for, forcing someone to build a new ball field or put an astroturf on the high school football field or something when they're just building a hotel would probably not pass muster. There would have to otherwise be some connection.
I'm thinking, you know, the town is looking to develop, what is it, Riverfront Park? And, you know, that'll be used by guests coming into the community, not just by the community itself. So people staying at the hotels, et cetera, would have the opportunity and avail themselves of access to the river to different events that are going to be taking place. So I'm thinking rather than I'll have it come out of the town coffers, that it could come out of some of these impact or exaction fees.
I, I think that makes sense. Yeah, that's a public recreational facility that their guests will benefit from. So, um, I think it would make sense to have them contribute towards it.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
But it says, you know, you can't impose the entire cost on the developers. So the Riverfront Park isn't developed yet.
For the construction or improvement. So if it's in the, if it's in the planning phase, I mean, yeah, I guess I, I, I would need, it's a good, good point. Would have to know how far away are we from actually building this thing?
I think this speaks to what I asked you earlier where it said the ordinance contains sufficient standards, the guy, the board assessment on the fees, including methodology and specific measurements the board considers. I mean, to me, we don't currently have any of that. Maybe that's something that we should have.
Yeah, I will gather some examples for us and we'll, we'll, uh, adopt, adopt something along those lines. That makes sense.
And Peter, when we enacted this first impact ordinance, you know, the town decided we needed another, needed another cell at the water treatment plant. And, you know, they broke, figured out how much the cell was going to cost. They divided it by the number of new units that it could support. And that's pretty much how they came up with the fees.
Okay.
They had a budget and, you know, they figured out how to pay, pay it off with the fees coming in.
Okay.
John, you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say, you were saying, you know, we don't have it constructed already, but we didn't have the cell done yet either. So it's kind of like putting money into a savings account. You'd have to have a what the proportion would be. It's just like you said.
What, what they, the developer's proportion would be. No question.
Yeah, Peter, I have, I have a question. Um, since two thousand and four, I, and I think quite a few other people believe that that impact fee was solely for the water treatment plant. Now, all the discussion, discussion leading up to that vote that I was aware of was that that's what the money would be used for. And that's all that money has been used for is either planning or executing, uh, water treat, the, the water treatment plant expansion. When I look at, looked at the vote that was taken in two thousand and four, uh, to enact it, it just does, um, that we can have an, uh, adopt an impact fee and it does not limit it to the water treatment cell. And then when I look at our land use plan ordinance, it does not limit it to the water treatment cell. So for, you know, first of all, I don't think that the town, or I'm not sure that the town is going to need a new treatment cell in the next six years, which means that any money we collected, we don't build a treatment cell with it, we're going to give it back to the, to the people who paid it, which is crazy. So to, to go about expanding the use of that money beyond the next water treatment cell, I was thinking it was going to take a vote of the town, but when I looked at the, what we already voted on, it didn't limit it. So do you have any thoughts on that? Like, does that need to be a vote of the planning board, a vote of the town, or can we just do it?
And, and does what need to be a vote of the town exactly?
Expanding the use of that money beyond the what next water, um, expansion of the water treatment plant.
I wouldn't think so because we adopted.
The planning board sent it off for the town warrant and, you know, once it passes, select for.
I mean, we adopted it in accordance with the RSA. The RSA says what you can use.
Is all those things, right. I, I just, I don't want to pull the wool over the townspeople's eyes. Since two thousand and four, that fund has only been used for water treatment plant expansion. I don't want some discussion that's a work session with no public input and we're going to all decide that we can do anything we want with that money of those 10 categories.
We're not voting anything tonight.
I know, I know. What if I walk away, what if Jack and I walk away from this saying, the town can do anything we want. We're going to, we're going to, you know, use it for the new town building. That's a, that's a legitimate use. I, I'm just making stuff up. I'll tell you about the new town building later. No, but, but, you know, not that we would do that, but I'm just saying, is there a process we need to go through to, to say this is no longer, um, limited to, to that one thing that we, we may not even build in the next six years?
According to this, that Peter said on page five, it says importantly, the impact fee revenue may be spent solely for the capital improvements for which it was collected or to reduce the cost of capital improvements made anticipation of the need which the fee was collected to be. And that was RSA six seventy-four twenty-one. So I think that's telling us that when we collect an impact fee, we, it has to be specifically stated what we're going to be using it for. So we can't, you can't just send it from here to there. Right, right. That's what I read.
I, I honestly don't think any vote would be legal to change, to authorize the expenditure of those funds for something else. I also wonder if Jana even knows that the impact fee ordinance has a six-year limit on it. Well, you can change. Refund shall be made upon the failure of the town meeting to appropriate the town, oh, the town share of the capital improvement costs within six years. Do you know what the town's share of this capital improvement is or, I guess we haven't gotten that far yet, huh?
Well, one of the things that we can do that has been done, Peters, as far as capital improvement projects, that unexpended monies from a specific capital improvement project have been revoked on or voted to go to a, move to a different capital improvement project. So, um, that, that, that's happened several times that I'm aware of at a town meeting.
So Carol, in, um, the real world that you live in, when somebody like a Hampton Inn, um, is, applies to you for, I guess, a, an occupancy permit, which I know it's not called that in Lincoln. You have them fill out a bedroom tax form of some sort to determine how many, how much they owe the town for this impact fee?
The very last thing that I sent to everybody in the package is the thing in the script that we use for collecting, the one that starts out, Mark Erman had an excellent question. Now that's the email on top. And so they, if you turn to the first attachment, we'll actually go turn to the second attachment where I have that boy Joe Schmo III in his dream home here. So, so yes, I do put in whether it's a hotel or, I have him show off the bedroom. Most of the hotels though are, that I've dealt with so far have been, been Dennis New Charms and those are individual units that are then owned by somebody. And so they, I do charge bedroom impact fees. On the left hand, on the right-hand side at the top, it says bedroom, five points per bedroom, uh, new construction only. So I do charge. And on this case, George Schmo had four bedrooms, but
In the box right above that, it says total bedroom points and $2,000. And does that money, does that $2,000 go to Jana's impact fee? It does? Okay. And that's for the water treatment cell. The, the money collected for the bedrooms is for the water treatment cell?
Well, I got a question on that because I see, I see further that there's points assessed for sewer points on one, on, on the end. So is that, are there sewer points that are collected financially?
Not for, not for bedrooms. No, there's, there's water sewer tap fees that are associated with fixtures that use water and sewer. And these are listed on here.
So are, are those impact fees or are those just separate?
No, these are separate connections. And they're like connection.
Is that like an exaction fee or is that like a, so it's not an impact?
No, it, it existed way before. Yeah, way before zoning. I, I find references to it with a whole box full of water and sewer tap fees from
Well, I guess, so the question is, do these fees we collect for water and sewer? If they are not impact fees or exaction fees, what are they? And do they have to be returned after six years if we don't use them?
I don't think the water and sewer tap fees are impact fees under the ordinance we're talking about. I think those are, uh, collected under a separate ordinance that Carol sent out. I don't think I printed it, but you've got water and sewer, um, ordinances.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get everybody, everybody copies those. There's the water ordinance and the sewer ordinance. It's a little bit longer than that. The title is a little bit longer than that.
Because if you look at the top of this form, it says make check payable to blah, blah, blah. Then it says water and sewer tap assessment form with impact fees. So I think the only impact fees on this form are the bedroom points. And so I think this has been a useful exercise because it has forced Ray and Carol and I, and now all of you to kind of take a closer look at this statute and this, this ordinance that we have that was approved in two thousand and four. And I think it's just been kind of operating on autopilot for many years. Um, and it's time for us to sort of clean it up a little bit, the process, because you know, when people, when the developers are before the planning board, in the condition of approval, the conditions are being created, there's really, I don't, I don't recall there really being any discussion about you're going to be, you're going to be paying a bedroom, you're going to be paying a fee for your number, based on your number of bedrooms, which is going to be an impact fee, which goes into a town account. You're also going to be paying water and sewer tap assessments. I, I think the, that's been sort of an unconscious collection of fees after the planning board process is over. And it probably needs to start becoming a more conscious and thoughtful planning board, part of the planning board process. Do, does this development impact to a significant degree any of these town facilities? And as a result, should we impose an impact fee upon this developer in these areas?
I would agree with it, but two things, two questions I have or want to comment is that on this form, it says water and sewer tap assessment form with impact fees. So the fees that are assessed off this are being stated as an impact.
Well, no, the bedrooms are the impact.
This this form doesn't segregate it. It just says, this is, it says that this is the water sewer tap assessment form, and it says with impact fees.
Like just the water assessment fee, the sewer assessment fee with the bedroom tax or impact fee. It's three different.
The only thing we've asked it under the impact fee order is just the bedroom tax.
Yeah, the other.
Excuse me, maybe, maybe I can help a little bit in this discussion. So in my review of this, and it did, obviously, we weren't around when this was put together, but it looks to me like the way this is structured is that the the total water tap, the the to, the water tap and the sewer tap, I would probably characterize those as connection fees. It's the cost of the development to make a connection to your your system. And and connection fees are figured really two ways. What is the cost of that at the actual connection that you would charge? You would charge a potential user, whatever that actual cost is. Some communities take it to a different level, which is to, it's basically a pay into the investments that are, have already been made into the system, because if the system wasn't there, they wouldn't be doing their particular development. So I think the water tap and the sewer tap fees are probably, could be characterized under a connection fee. And then the total bedroom fee, it seems to me, would be an impact fee. And then that would, that gets back to the, you know, how you title it, it's water and sewer tap assessments would be your connection fees with impact fees, and the impact fees would be the bedroom fee, that third category. I think, based on just my read of this information, I think that's how how this was structured.
And and just to go along with that, thank you, Ray, that that was helpful. But to go along with that, the selectmen have historically set the rates for the connection fees. Those have been under the purview of the Board of Selectment. We have not looked at, nor do I think it's under our jurisdiction to, I mean, the Board of Selectment's jurisdiction to to set or change the bedroom tax, which is an impact fee. I believe that belongs to the planning board. Number one, is that correct? And number two, should we take a look at that five hundred dollars and and figure out, okay, the cost of the next treatment cell is X, we have this many more bedrooms to to service, is five hundred dollars the correct math? It was for the third cell because we paid cash for that last cell we did in the treatment plant. Yet we do that.
That you ordered the parents' pieces two thousand fifteen, probably was installed by sixteen.
Okay, fifteen. But we did, we did, we were under the gun under that six year holding limit. We ordered some stuff for the water treatment plant.
To redeem those funds.
Before we actually needed it on site, but we bought stuff in anticipation of putting it in. So that we we met that six year window, and that was in two twenty fifteen. So we're coming up on a six year window here.
Well, I think to go along with what you're saying, the sewer has not been thought up in regards to what impacts.
We haven't calculated anything.
We haven't done anything for sewer, so I think, you know, if we're going to look at this thing, we probably should look at, you know, like you were saying, the five hundred dollars is for water. You know, it it maybe we need to be, right, because we're looking, staring down the barrel somewhere down the road of a sewer, a sewer expansion. Maybe we should be looking at that.
Okay, you go ahead.
To answer your questions, OJ, the answers are yes and yes. I think, yes, the amount of the impact fee is a planning board function and and also, yes, I think it makes sense for the planning board to review the cost of the water treatment cell.
Excuse me, can I just make a comment here on the water treatment cell? So the, there, there was a spreadsheet and it's titled estimated water impact fees. It's dated December nineteen of two thousand and eight. And they make reference to collecting the impact fees. I assume this is the basis of the bedroom impact fee because they calculated this based on the number of bedrooms. So I just want to bring to your attention that what was contemplated, what looks like it was con- con- contemplated back in two thousand and eight was the installation of the third cell. You're talking about maybe accessing these these monies to the fourth cell. Based on Peter's description of what the impact fee can be applied to, I question whether you can actually make that leap or not. You may, but just wanted to make sure that the T is crossed and the I is dotted. And that cell is, has been installed and is operating. So the question that you should ask yourself is, can we still continue to collect an impact fee on bedrooms based on what was contemplated back in two thousand and eight that set up this impact fee? And maybe that's a question for you, Peter.
You might notice that the number of bedrooms estimated per house is three. I don't think I've given a permit for a house that small since I started here, only one or two. But of all the, all the permits that I've issued, nobody has three bedrooms or less. Nobody.
Small families can't afford to live there anymore.
That's true.
When was the most recent cell built and when is the next cell going to have to be built?
I think the recent, most recent cell was put in in, was it twenty fifteen? That timeframe?
We think it was sixteen. We think we ordered stuff in fifteen.
Okay, so in twenty fifteen, cell number three went in and cell number four, based on a two thousand and sixteen oil tanner study, they did a water system assessment, and they projected the fourth cell going in in twenty twenty four. As needing to go into twenty twenty four based on the water use trends, historical water use trends.
Now, what, one of the other things, Ray, that was in your dissertation was that you recommended updating the water and sewer capacity studies at every, pretty much at every turn, just to keep on top of where we were at, which would tell us where our sewer, where our water is at on a regular basis from people who are coming in as part of their requirement for development.
Yes, there were, there were two, the two recommendations we have for you going forward, because again, you're, you're starting your, you have sufficient capacity on on your wastewater system, both at the treatment plant and in the interceptors that that tie into the treatment plant for not only your existing users, but the vested but unbuilt developments. So that that's the good news. And so our recommendations that we had in our memorandum basically laid out some strategies going forward. So there's two things that we recommend that you do is basically do an annual assessment on what your demand has historically been, so you can get a handle on what that use trend is. You know, is it going up two percent a year or three percent a year, et cetera, et cetera? And then anytime a new development comes before you, significant development, have them through the peer review process, which is what we did on the hotels and the medical development facility, have them do a capacity assessment based on what they're telling us their use and the demand on the systems are going to be. So if you do those two things, they're just basically, you know, real easy management strategies, so you can keep your eye on the ball. So you can better anticipate when you need to do those capital investments on your water wastewater infrastructure.
So Ray, I have a question for you in regard to my earlier comment. With the DES administrative rule states that you only have three years.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think different permits, different permits at DES have different sunsets to them, different timelines and durations. You know, groundwater discharge permit is typically a five year permit, you know, alteration of terrain, I think that might be a three year permit. So I think there's, there's two issues here. There's, there's obviously, you know, whatever the state says, the, you know, the timeline is that a permit can be active before it's actually, anything is done. And obviously, you know, at the local level, the planning board can set their own guidance and and requirements in that regard.
Right, but I guess, you know, my my question raised with regards to the capacity. So you're trying to figure this out, and if their permits aren't valid or had no longer any good because of more than, longer than three years, then the capacity changes because until, or doesn't until they get a new permit.
That's true. So I mean, if you, I mean, if, if, if you have a vested development and they don't take advantage of, you know, while you have sufficient capacities, they, you know, they like the rapids, I think, you know, they they were, they got their approval back in, I think, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. I don't think they didn't put a shovel in the ground. Conceivably, you could have run out of capacity in that timeline, in which case the DES would not allow them to hook up.
Right, and I mean, that that's what this guy, Robert Daniels from New Hampshire DES, back in twenty eighteen. Said sewer connections for a termination years ago have not been constructed, the permit will no longer be valid. An applicant will need to be resubmitted pursuant to ENBWQ seven oh three, and we need to demonstrate compliance with law correct requirements. So, you know, I guess the question is, like you said, if someone is out for the three years and they don't, they don't renew their permit, does that mean that they lose their, does that mean that they lose, lose that or that? I would assume.
They just have to, they they would just have to resubmit a, a connection permit to DES and they they may, and then they, you know, the DPD director has to sign off on that. And, you know, Nate could just, you know, simply sign off on that if, assuming you have sufficient capacity for them to hook on. And then, and they can go far.
They said it all goes for two year extensions after that. After the first three, it goes to two year extension.
Yep. So what you do, when it comes to DES and filing extensions, you get, they'll issue a permit and they'll let you go with a two, three year extension, depending upon which permit it is. And after that, extension expires and you haven't done anything, then you have to file for a new, then you have to submit a new permit application. In which case, they'll probably turn around and give you a new permit.
As long, as long as there's, as long as there's available flow, you know, the capacity and the regulations have been changed?
Yeah, no, the reg, yeah, as long as there's sufficient capacity, the regulation wouldn't change. They would just issue them a new permit. I mean, there's, again, think of it in terms of the state does this, what the state needs to do, but at the local level, you know, that's, that's an entirely different thing. You could simply turn around and say, well, okay, your, your state permit has, you know, expired. But you're invested, as far as the planning board is concerned, you're invested development, so we're okay with it. Go get your permit. They get the perm, they get a new permit, and they come back to you and say, here's my new permit, and then they're all, they're ready to go.
So I guess, I'm sorry to keep talking here, but, so I guess the analogy for me would be, so we, we have a development that comes in. They they get permitted, they have three years. They only do twenty five percent of their development in that three year period. They're still not going to do anything after that three year period, but the town has someone else who's ready to go on shovel ready, permit ready, all ready to go. They, how do you, how do you allocate those, those, I allocate that?
Well, you can't, you can't give something away that you don't have. So if you, if you have the capacity, then you can let that second development hook on. If you don't have the capacity, then that second development can't hook on.
But you wouldn't have the capacity, you wouldn't have the capacity if you still had that consideration for the development that hasn't, that hasn't filled its total development yet.
Well, you would have, you know, based on the policy that I, as I understand it, that the, that the town has adopted, it's, you know, these vested developments have a, and that was in the wastewater capacity assessment that we did, that you basically have set aside X amount of gallons of capacity to the vested development, and you're not going to give that to anybody else. So that that capacity sits there for those developments, and everybody else comes in on a first come, first served basis.
So Ray, how long does that capacity sit? Is it that infinitum? Or is there a timeframe when it runs out and you could give it to the second developer?
Well, our recommendation is that you, again, our recommendation is that you set some termination dates here. You should consider setting termination dates to the developments that have already been approved. I don't, again, how that, what that looks like, I'm not quite certain. Perhaps you want to, you know, notify the applicant, the developer, that, you know, we're running into capacity issues, we're starting to use up our available capacity. And then just tell them that you have three years from the date of this notification to get your project either started or completed, however you want to term it. That's one way to do it. And then by ordinance, again, as I stated before, there's several communities that state that if you have not pulled your building permit within two years of planning board approval, then yours, then your approval is void.
But we need to put those in our regulations, those things.
Ray, can I ask, is there a difference though between types of projects? In other words, take, take Coolidge Falls.
Yeah.
That's been vested and built for years. However, there are still lots up there that are owned by people who just have chosen not to build a house yet.
Correct.
So, so, you know, would would that individual lot owner be subject to a three year thing from the time that Coolidge Falls was was approved? And can we make a different rule for them versus something like Forest Ridge or South Peak Resort where we've approved the master plan, but not individual components within, of all of the individual components within that, those master plans? You know, Forest Ridge has two hundred and twenty two units built. There's two hundred and seventy six left. Now, some of those, again, are on lots or the pieces of land that that there's approvals out there and they're working on. But a lot of those are just in, in a master plan theory that that nothing has been done beyond the master plan approval back in the eighties, I believe.
Right, I think this might get back to the question about, what is substantial, the definition of substantial completion? So if you're a developer, I mean, from the, from the, from the, from the municipality standpoint, I would define substantial completion as, you know, a, when, when the infrastructure is built to a level that it's being used. So for example, the water and wastewater systems are in, houses can connect up, the roadway, the road network is in, et cetera, et cetera. So by the time that level of investment's been done, you're pretty sure that that development is probably going to get built out over time. It may take two years, it may take, you know, fifteen years. In that case, my recommendation would be, that would be one of those vested developments where you know, you've got, you've got basically a subdivision that's been built out, essentially, all the infrastructure is in place. And eventually, those house lots will get sold over time, so you should set aside some level of facility capacity to accommodate those. A situation like, for example, and I don't mean to pick on them, I'm just using them as an example, like the rapids where it's been, you know, that particular project has been, you know, has been on the shelf and nothing's happened for fifteen years. At that point, I'd say that, you know, it's, it's been quite a while. You don't want to be, the town doesn't want to be in a position to have to actually build infrastructure to accommodate vested developments that don't, that probably aren't going to see the light of day. That's a huge, that's a huge investment that's not going to have a good rate of return for your community. So that's why I'm suggesting that you may want to consider, on the vested developments, go back to those applicants and say, are you really going to do this? If you are, you got three years from this date, because we need to manage our water and wastewater facilities differently.
I ask a quick question. Our, Ray, is River, what was it called that hasn't put a shovel in the ground, Riverfront?
I think it's called the Rapids, is that correct, Cal?
Yeah, that's right.
Are they not, so they're not vested?
They haven't done a thing. Peter, that.
All right, so.
Peter?
Yes?
The Rapids is the, is the development that we went to court with and reached the settlement that involved the town access to the levee. Part of that, part of that settlement was an, an agreement related to water and sewer for the future.
That's Russ, Russ Cooley?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that, then that particular, that particular settlement agreement obviously controls because it's a, it's a settlement agreement that we reached during litigation, so. Does that, I, we'll have to pull that. Does that have a, a set number of years for them to do something?
I, I don't remember.
Yeah, we'll have to pull that. Setting that one aside then, because that's subject to a, a, a settlement agreement. Yeah, we'll have to pull that, um, setting that one aside then, because that's subject to a, 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 a settlement agreement reached during litigation. The others, there are, there are, there are several other vested developments in Lincoln that have. Unbuilt but approved development rights, and. Those are frustrating, those are the ones Paul was talking about, that, you know, do, how, do we keep waiting for them when somebody else is, is, is ready to go? And these vested unbilled development rights are. Uh, occupying space, but there's no indication that they're going to use them in the near future. And so what we're talking about is extinguishing development rights and a vested development, and that's difficult to do. Because when you become vested, you get, you know, a significant amount of. Power and control over the completion of your project. Um, but there is a statute, six seventy-six, colon, four A, called revocation of recorded approval. And there are several different, um. Uh, there are several different reasons which allow a planning board to initiate a revocation process. Um, and so we could, if, if it's been many years since we've heard from some of these vested developments, we could reach out to them. And say, we are, you know, what, what are your plans? Um, if you don't have any plans to build these unbilled units within, you know, the next year or so. Um, we're going to initiate the revocation process or something, uh, just to. Start a conversation with them to find out, you know, do they care? Do they really wanna maintain these development rights, or will they voluntarily relinquish them? If they want to maintain them, then what are their plans? If they don't have any plans for their foreseeable future, do we feel like we have. Uh, enough to go on to initiate the revocation process, which requires a public hearing and a planning board decision, and then they can appeal it to a superior court, so. Um, that's, there is a statutory process to follow if we want to try to extinguish some of these. Development rights, it does become more difficult once they become vested, but it's not impossible.
Well, on, on, on the, uh, master plan for South Peak. They gave a year specific when they were going to expect it to be filled out.
It was like a fifteen year buildup.
Yeah, and that's a long since gone by.
That awarding was anticipated, twelve year buildup.
That's all gone by, I can tell you, I, I think all towns. I think that if a development or developer or project comes in. And they want the water and sewer and the other whatever infrastructure needs they need. I think the town has a responsibility to know how long they think it's gonna be before they finish that, because it does hold up other projects. Does hold up other developers, holds up other, you know, so it, it it's hard to plan for if you don't know. I mean, and I understand everybody's at the whim with the, the economy, so if the economy goes down, then they can't build, but. I mean, it it kinda holds the town up, if someone else comes in that, that is having a strong year and they wanna do something.
Unbuild units? No, that's what I'm saying.
No. Uh, ju- just, I, I think we need to put this conversation into perspective, we're spending a lot of time on it. There were five vested resorts, the landing, all the roads are in, all the waters in, all the sewers in. The town took the position that they're not vested, we'll be in court and we'll lose. The rapids, we're under a, a, a legal agreement that we signed to get out of that lawsuit with them. We can go back and look at exactly what it says, what the timeframes are, but, but, but. The town is not gonna be neg on, on that signed agreement that was court approved. We have Coolidge Falls, again, all the waters in, all the sewers in, all the roads are in, it's just a matter of private lot owners not developing their lots. Then we have South Peak Resort, we're in court with them over this whole thing right now, to, to throw something into the works. Uh, it's just gonna cost us money without getting us anywhere, so we're really talking about Forest Ridge. They have two hundred and twenty units built out of the four hundred and ninety-eight approved. Are they vested, should we withdraw, pull their permits, let's talk about Forest Ridge, because it's really the only thing on the table. That we're talking about, that, in my opinion.
I mean, I think certain phases are vested, but you have the unbilled phases, they haven't put a shovel to the ground at all, thirty years.
Correct, so, but again, that's really the only vested thing that, that to me is on the seesaw. Do we say yes, do we say no, everything else, we're gonna end up in court and we're gonna lose, so let's, I just, we're not gonna go there.
The Riverfront, Riverwalk, whatever, that's vested, right? But the Riverwalk's actually best, they've got, they've got a building. That's, that does a substantial investment phase, they've built the first phase.
Are still within their either initial or secondary, um, approval.
They've already, um, Riverwalk for phase two as, has applied, you know, where. Anyway, it's, they'll, they'll get a permit.
I think the planning board now is doing a much better job of, uh, putting a deadline on. You know, the construct, completion of the project or substantial completion of the project, which is why. It was either Riverwalk or Fairfield recently came back in to ask for an extension, I mean, uh, Fairfield or Hampton came back in to ask for an extension of that. Um, so that's a good summary, OJ, it sounds like the only ones that, the only, the only one on that list that we. There's any question about would be Forest Ridge, um, you could, the selectmen could, you know, reach out to Forest Ridge. Uh, it has, it could be a amicable to begin with, friendly, just. Uh, communication, just, uh, asking for their plans regarding the unbilled development rights.
See, that's.
That's about, you know, that's how I would initiate the conversation, what are your plans, we're trying to get a handle on our unbilled but vested development rights. Also, I think Riverwalk had a phase three, and I think I was told by their lawyer at one point that they're not doing phase three, so. Uh, I wonder if there's some space being occupied by a Riverwalk phase three that we might be able to, vo- they might voluntarily relinquish.
As far as, uh, capacity for water and sewer?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that Dennis personally is, is not gonna do it, but he, I assume that he thinks of. You know, some successor might.
Well, that's a problem, everyone, so you really don't.
I mean, no one's, no one's gonna volunteer to give it up, this is, the rights have value to the next person.
But, but I don't think they, I, I, well, I don't think they have a choice whether they voluntarily give it up or not, I think, you ask how long it's gonna take. Do you, I mean, you know, what you think, so at least you, you have an idea, it's a thing. It's a tool, it's like the, the capital approval, you know, you, you're asking them for their, their best guess as to how long it's gonna be. And then you might say, after that date, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna come in and ask you for that, uh, revocation. You know, if, if you don't meet that, so maybe we ask them for it, let them set the date, and at least we'll have an idea. And that, you know, if it becomes ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, and, you know, the, the revocation process might start after fifteen. You know, at least we allow them a period of time, let them think about it. It gives us something to plan for.
What would, what would you do if you lived under Lake Mead? No water out there anymore, I'm sure they had all kinds of, slated for this. Um, stuff happens, the world changes.
You know, again, I, I think that conversation here needs to get more focused on, on the future, and I think that we're. We're taking the right steps to look at the impact fees, to look at putting limits on. How good a permit is good for, and we did that with Hampton, we did that with Fairfield, um, you know, to look backwards, again, I think we're just looking at Forest Ridge. And we can pursue that, but I, I don't think that's important as, as looking forward to make sure that, that we're doing it right going forward.
I'm agreeing with, but I think we need to, I think we need to update our, uh, impact fee orders.
Well, what if you just kinda re- rewrite it so it's not specific. To a treatment cell, but reference the RSA that.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't reference the treatment cell, the board of selectmen, just figured that's what we needed to pay for.
Right, oh.
Um, yeah.
I mean, references.
Back in two thousand and eight, or six, or four, or whatever the year that was.
Yeah.
Peter was gonna send us some, some more information on that, right? As to what we might do to make it a little more specific.
Yeah, some ga- some guidelines, um. The, the ordinance itself is fine, it's broad, it's, it references six seventy-four twenty-one, it has the same definition of impact fee. That I read to you earlier with that laundry list of different municipal capital improvements that you can impose an impact fee for, so the ordinance. Article six, section G is okay, um, I'll, I'll pr- find some guidelines, um, from some other towns and we'll take a look at those.
Peter, have you seen anyone that has like a, a checklist, so, so, you know. Just like when someone comes for a, a land use plan, we have a checklist that we look at, it looks at parking, it looks at lighting, it looks at. Traffic flow, it looks at all of these different things, would it be reasonable to have a checklist? That would also say, does this, um, does this project involve any off-site improvements that need to be done? Such as water or sewer lines or whatever, does this project affect, um, you know, demand on. Recreation, does it affect demand on public safety, does it affect demand on, and, and kinda goes through all of the things that we are allowed to. In, uh, look at impact fees, and help us say, oh, it does, it does affect this. Now let's do some math to figure out a number that we can justify for that particular impact.
That's, uh, that's an excellent idea, Carol and I could work on a checklist, like a one-page checklist for the planning board to use for subdivisions and site plan reviews. Um, to, 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 just stop for a second and think about these different areas. In relation to the project under discussion. We can create that.
Say, say one of the here has a pretty broad impact, uh. Schedule where, you know, they broke it out in the percentages for public safety, recreation. Uh, school and everything, I think I had supplied that back a couple of years ago. Yeah, I think I supplied it during the budget cycle, you know, or whatever it was, uh, they kinda. Really grabbed a hold of that, spread it out amongst.
Maybe you, if you, if you have that accessible, maybe you wanna send that to Carol and, and Peter. And you wanna copy the whole, send it to the whole board. Yeah.
Impact fees, they're all cast in stone, right? So much for this, so much for that, the only thing that's really up there would be exactions, like hook on the sword. Digging up.
No.
Route one twelve or. Yeah.
Yeah, the water and sewer connection fees, I don't wanna say cast in stone, but they've been in place for a long, long time. And we've tweaked the rates, we just did that a couple of years ago. I mean, I don't remember what year, but it was when, uh, Jane was selected, it was Jan- Jan- Jane and I. So it was fairly recently that we, that we did those. Um, the bedroom tax, which is under the purview of the planning board, has not been changed since two thousand and four. So a five hundred dollar bedroom in two thousand and four probably is not what a five hundred dollar bedroom in twenty twenty-one.
So. I, I have a question probably for you, OJ, so in your mind, what's the difference between an impact fee? And the C I P that we have, I know an impact fee or exact fee is related to anything that is. Specifically impacted by that, uh, expansion or that development. But when we look at broadening this out and using, um, fire or recreation or highway, public works. I mean, on how it changes for that, public works or anything else, please, I mean, we have a C I P that we. Tax people with, so are, would we be double taxing them because we're using a C I P process? To raise money to do some of these things anyway?
Um, and, and, and that's a good question, maybe Pete going in on this too, but my opinion on that is that the capital reserve, capital. Uh, uh, plan is for replacement, okay, um, you know, the road that I live on. It, which is in excellent shape, by the way, it's gonna need to be replaced, um. At some point in the future, probably twenty years, because it was just done, alright? So every road in this town, there's a cost to having it in twenty twenty-one in usable shape, even though we don't need to pay for any of that. Okay, so, so it's to be, that's, that's to replace it.
Um. But like when you're talking about recreation and you wanna bu- build a gazebo over there, or another big dome, like things.
That's, that's a new capital project.
Right, which we do fund some new capital projects.
We, we do, um, it's, it's, again, it's my thought that if you're building something for the future. The future people should pay for the future taxpayers, pay for that, now, the planning of it, the engineering of it. I, I don't see a problem with the current taxpayers paying for it, which is kinda what we've been doing with, with Riverfront Park.
Um, right, and that's all the thing, but, but we do have money for Riverfront Park and there.
What we will be doing with, with the town building, um, but we, you know.
Well, maybe that's something that we need to look at, as far as being a little more specific about wh- what it goes for as far as an impact fee. And, and maybe some, if we're, if we are in fact collecting an impact fee, some of those things, maybe. Cause of impact fees can be used, um, in the C I P. Uh, poorly impact revenue fees may be spent solely for the capital improvements for which they were collected to receive.
The capital improvement, not the capital reserve.
Right.
Is that correct? Peter, would, would, would sticking money into a capital reserve is not considered spending it, right, that would not satisfy the six-year limit. We actually have to spend it on a piece of equipment or a piece of building or.
I think we've put it in the C I P, but it has to be tracked for six years, and that amount went in, if we don't spend it for that, then I think. I, I don't know, I gotta.
I would say there's no point in putting it into a C I P and trying to track it separate, it's in an impact fee account. And we have, we have to present a report for that every year, it'd be easier to leave it in there until we spend it on. A water improvement, or sewer improvement, or something.
Or recreation, something like that.
Um, the statute specifically requires a municipality. If a municipality wants to adopt an impact fee ordinance, it must have enacted a capital improvements program. Um, that's a requirement under the statute, you need a capital improvements program before you can adopt an in fact, impact fee ordinance. Uh, once you have a capital improvements program and an impact fee ordinance, then you can, um. When a new project is before the planning board, you can try to determine. Um, what kind of stress or additional cost that new project will cause. To the construction or improvement of your capital facilities and impose an appropriate impact fee. Upon that project, and that fee has to be accounted for separately, segregated from the municipality's general fund. And used solely for the capital improvements for which it was collected.
Near extent from the general, uh, requirements of municipal budget act.
Correct, right.
Regarding limitations, so you can overexpend then. We use a gap.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be overexpensive, it's not an operating expense.
Right.
It'd be just like a capital reserve, where we can spend money out of that, and it's not limited by the budget approved at the town meeting.
Right. Chris, Ray.
Jay, we have any other questions? Ray, Peter, you wanted to tell us anything else at the moment?
I'm all set, oh, thank you. I think I'm all set unless folks have, you know, specific questions about capacity issues, I didn't know if you wanted to get into the weeds of that, or. Maybe do that another time, or, I can give you a bottom line assessment on your water and wastewater.
You told us that we had capacity, right, for all of the existing approved projects?
That's, that's correct, there's sufficient wastewater capacity to accommodate your current demand, plus the demand that's expected from a full build out of the vested develop- developments. At your wastewater plant and the interceptors that are leading into the wastewater plant, now there's probably areas within your collection system. That, like for example, the Fairfield, then we determined that there was a segment of, uh, your collection system that would have to be upgraded. Uh, between them and the plant, um, before they could make a connection, so, and again, that's because we had them do the capacity analysis for their development.
And is that the same with water as well, right?
So on the water side, uh, you've done several studies, uh, over the last several years. So on the water side, you've done several studies over the last several years and I'll just, I'll run through it. So on the, on your water treatment plant, your treatment capacity is at one point seven five NGD and you should have adequate capacity according to a report issued by Old Towner Bank in two thousand and sixteen until about twenty twenty-four, assuming your current use rate continues on its current trend. And at that point, you'll have to consider bringing on a fourth treatment unit, which would bring your capacity system-wide up to then about two point two million gallons a day. That includes your treatment plant and also the cold spring well. The, as far as your store, water storage is concerned, this is the whole fire protection issue. And the, there was a report that was, a series of reports that were released by Weston and Sampson. And your Pollard, there's three tanks, your Pollard Road tank, your Loon Village tank and the Indian Head tank. For the Pollard Road tank, there's sufficient capacity to meet your peak demands and your fire flow requirements. And there's a deficiency in meeting your emergency storage requirements, but that's low on the priority list. Usually for your water storage tank, you want to make sure you have enough equalization and enough fire, enough capacity for your fire flow requirements. For the Loon Village tank, there's sufficient capacity to meet your peak demands. There is a deficiency in meeting your fire flow requirements currently. And it's the same thing for Indian Head. There's a sufficient capacity to meet your peak demand, but there is a deficiency in meeting your fire flow requirements. Now, when I say deficiency, it's a deficiency relative to levels of service and benchmarks that we establish for those types of facilities. And it doesn't mean you don't have fire protection. It just, it's basically just doesn't meet the standard. And so Weston and Sampson did a, again, a series of reports. The latest report that came out was they did a tank sighting assessment study. And they identified locations for a tank in the Loon Village pressure zone and then a tank in the Indian Head pressure zone. And that's their recommendation. So the recommendations were really broken down in the work they've done over the last year or so is to, I'll just list them in order of priorities. Remove the Crooked Mount Road from the main pressure zone. That will free up some additional capacity in the Pollard Road tank and in your main pressure zone. And then you should install a pressure reducing valve between the Loon Village and the main pressure zone so that Loon Village can augment a fire demand in the main pressure zone. And then to construct those two tanks that I made reference to, that being the Loon Village and the Indian Head. Those are really the four, four recommendations that have come out of the work most recently from Weston and Sampson. So on the wastewater side, you're in good shape. On the water side, you have some specific issues that we recommend that you address.
So. I guess this impact fee, one of the things that we should probably look at is how, how that relates to the fire flow and the supply tanks and what type of impact fees or exact fees we should be using to help support that.
Yeah, you can, you can, you can certainly, certainly go that route. Absolutely.
I mean, that, if that's something that it seems like we're, we're a little deficient in, maybe the impact fee, maybe we should look at that. Ray, were any of the calculations taken into consideration Weston Sampson's suggestion that, and the need for another water tower holding tank of eight hundred thousand gallons in the South Peak area?
I'm sorry, Mr., you, you're breaking up there just a minute.
Were any of your calculations taken into consideration? Weston Sampson's report, I think it was number two B, where they indicated that the potential for the tower in South Peak, eight hundred thousand plus gallon.
Yeah, so if your, if your question was in terms of its citing, yeah, they did recommend that the water storage tank be located in the South Peak area to collaborate with South Peak Development to see if, you know, they want to partner up potentially to build a tank up there. Now, if you were to build a tank up there in order to serve your community, you'd have to push the tank up the hill from where the South Peak Development had proposed their tank location. And when you push it up the hill, you're on Forest Service land. So obviously you're going to have to jump through that hoop in order to get a final approval for citing a tank at that location.
You're aware that the town has already contacted the Forest Service and I think they've been out to look at the site?
That I wasn't aware of. No, I wasn't informed with that.
I believe that's factual.
Okay.
That is, the fire chief's taken and said, yes, they have been out.
So that's, any questions on capacity assessment? That's kind of a, I know it's kind of a quick snapshot, but.
Well, I think it would be nice to, to have a, just as John had, maybe something that, even if it's a wag, as far as what the future investments might be for either the fire flow or supply tanks so that as they relate to an impact fee or exact fee, we wouldn't have some ideas for what to charge for that. And I think probably that would need to come from someone like you. Say, you know, you, you need that X amount of dollars to be able to do these tanks. And if you can pick up some of it as an impact fee, you probably should try it. And as Peter said, the more numbers we have, the more numbers we can brush, the easier it is if someone challenges us to say, you know, I think you charged me too much. And maybe we can say, look, this is what we, we, we need this. You're a part of it and you should, should pony up and help us there.
And we can certainly help you with that.
Anyone have anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think this is going to be super helpful. And want to thank both of you for helping us get, get through this. Peter, the next, the, the next thing that we need to talk about as a board is, is my Board of Selectmen on the email that you wrote regarding the Board of Selectmen having a hearing on that non-conforming project. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything to the planning board related to that. And Ray, you don't have to hang on. Thank you.
Really think it's.
Are you guys all set with me?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
I said, I don't really think it's a planning board issue, is it? I mean, it's either they, they either need to go to the ZBA or the Board of Selectmen.
True, I guess, I guess it's more like you, you had mentioned to the board that typically this goes to the ZBA, but in our lupo, it directs it back to the Board of Selectmen. Is this something that the planning board should look at changing in our lupo or do you think it's, it's a legitimate process even though it doesn't follow what the state says is typical?
Well, I thought the state, the state, the RSA said it can, may go to the Board of Selectmen. It does say that, I think.
I, I don't think, well, obviously I don't think that the fact that your lupo has a provision which allows the selectmen to make this decision, that's not a violation of state law. And in fact, we, I did find through a discussion with the other lawyer, another town, Waterville Valley, which also delegates this decision-making authority or similar decision-making authority to the Board of Selectmen. And I suspect there are others that, you know, I'm not aware of throughout New Hampshire. So the issue is there's some folks named Jocinski that own property at one ninety-six Black Mountain Road. And they.
They want to put a bedroom over the garage there. This is from Attorney Bolt. They want to, it's non-conforming as it lies now. It's in the setback. And they want to put a bedroom over the garage.
So basically the bedroom is going to be in the setbacks as well?
The setback is going to be in the, over the garage, which is already in, in the setback.
And they don't want to go to the ZBA?
Yeah, the, the, the current attached garage section of the home does encroach into the twenty-five foot setback by about six feet. And they want to create an additional bedroom by going up over the garage so that there would be new living space within that plane of the non-conforming space, but without encroaching further into the setback. They'd just be going straight up. Lincoln's Land Use Plan Ordinance says that, let me find. Okay, Article three, C three. It says, "A non-conforming use may not be expanded except upon a finding by the Board of Selectmen or their designee that," and then two requirements that the selectmen would need to find. A, "The expansion reflects the nature and purpose of the existing non-conforming use so as not to constitute a different use." And B, "The expansion will not have a different or detrimental impact on the neighborhood in which the use is located." So their lawyer said, geez, I read Article three, C three, and it looks like we have to go to the Board of Selectmen. And then Carol and I were talking about whether, you know, whether that's true. Is he right? Or should they go to the ZBA and apply for a variance? And I, I think Article C three applies. And under the ordinance, it should go to the selectmen. And if they can meet these two criteria, then the selectmen can approve this upward expansion because it doesn't go further into the setback. So that's the backdrop. I don't know if you guys want to change your lupo to eliminate this Board of Selectmen to take away this jurisdiction from the Board of Selectmen to, to hear these types of issues or requests, then you can do that. I don't think that you necessarily have to. I don't think it's illegal.
Yes, the Board of Selectmen.
I just wanted to say that, you know, Peter and I disagree about this. The, I think that it looks like it's a change in use or an expansion of use, which is different than a dimensional requirement. You know, I think there are two distinct aspects for instance in site plan review. You know, there's a, an expansion of use and then there's an expansion, you know, of the footprint or basically the volume and dimension of the, of the building. So, anyway, I, I don't necessarily agree that, that it meant an expansion of the building. But anyway, I mean, I think you could read it either way, so.
I guess we shouldn't talk too much about case here.
Right, and, and I'm not advocating for the board to make a change. It was, I was surprised when I got the email and said that the Board of Selectmen is the one in charge of this rather than the ZBA. It must be a week ago. I said, oh, the ZBA does that. Okay, and, and no, it's the Board of Selectmen. I'm not advocating for, I want to make sure we're all aware of it. The, the board agreed that we're going to have a notifier butters and have a hearing.
Okay.
Post it just as if it was ZBA type of a meeting, but we'll, we'll, we'll do it.
I mean, I was just, we slightly discussed it. Want to ask the planning board to change it. That's up to you. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, I'm, I'm, again, I'm not advocating for a change. I wanted to make, I was not aware of it. Maybe everyone aware of it.
You, you did say it Monday night's meeting then. I think when your question was, can the board send this to the ZBA if they want to do that? And I thought you were going to ask Peter that.
Oh, ZBA to make a change?
Designate. It says, the Board of Selectmen are their designees. So we would, we could, we could. But typically the board, you said the Board of Selectmen's designee would be.
Town manager.
And the Board of Selectmen, send it to anybody as their designee?
I don't think the Board of Selectmen could send it to the ZBA because, because if you send it to the ZBA, the ZBA would have to apply these same two criteria. And the ZBA doesn't have that jurisdiction under state law. The ZBA only has jurisdiction to hear a variance appeal or an appeal of an administrative decision or a request for a special exception or an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements. Those are the four areas of ZBA jurisdiction and the selectmen can't give the ZBA additional jurisdiction.
And, and you're right, and, and that could be, you bring up a good point, Peter. That could be why, that could be why it's in this Board of Selectmen.
Yes, it's fine with me.
Because it does, you could be right. That's a very good point.
That's one. Oh, sorry, Ryan.
So if the Board of Selectmen deny you a similar request, does the applicant have the ability to go to the ZBA for a variance on the decision of the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, an appeal.
Anything about appeal on there?
If the Board of Selectmen deny the permit or deny this, this request for the upward expansion, where would Attorney Bolt file his appeal? Anytime a decision is made by any, you know, municipal official or, or in this case, board, which involves the interpretation of a zoning ordinance provision, in your case, a land use plan ordinance, then the property owner can file an appeal to the ZBA as, as, as an appeal of an administrative decision. So I think Attorney Bolt would probably not file a variance request with the ZBA, but would appeal the selectmen's decision to the ZBA as an appeal of an administrative decision. Either that or he'd go directly to Grafton County Superior Court or maybe both.
Because I'm an elected member of the ZBA also, there was a question as to whether I could sit on the VOS and the ZBA. And when I spoke with the attorney, Nat Gray, his name is from New Hampshire Municipal, he wrote a, a decision that I, I gave to the board that basically said what you just said. That if there was a decision made by the VOS, then it would go to the ZBA or could go to the ZBA and then I would have to recuse myself from that board because I've been involved in, in the initial hearing there. But that's where he said that it could go. Didn't say it had to go there, but you're right. Could go to court.
Was he talking about this case or just in general?
Oh, this was just in general, that I could sit on both courts.
Okay.
Carol? So I guess my question is, you know, I've had a few different people ask me about adding a story to, you know, a building that they have that's already in the setbacks. And I've said that they have to go to the ZBA to get a variance for that. So if you wanted to add like a fourth, you know, just make this up. You know, there's a, there's a three-story apartment building over here and if they wanted, and they're all, they're very much in the setback. They wanted to add a fourth story, then they would then ask the Board of Selectmen?
No, but on the other hand, it's, the use is legal. It's not a non-conforming use. It's over here on Main Street.
But if it's in the setback.
Right, but the use is. It's not like it's a fireworks factory. I'm talking. Don't mind. So anyway, so you know, the use is legal. If it was a fireworks factory in a residential zone, that would be a non-conforming use.
Right, but, but they're talking, I'm just talking about a dimensional change. A dimensional change is not a change in use. It's just a dimensional change.
Right.
So what you're saying is that that should go to the Board of Selectmen instead of the, the ZBA for increasing the, you know, I talked to, to Talon Hanover. And, you know, he said that, that the way he read our ordinance, that that would require you to go to the ZBA to increase the volume, the dimensional volume of the building in the setback area. So that's, you know, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around how this works because I now have told multiple people that they need to go to the ZBA for variance in those circumstances. So I just want to make sure that I understand where I should be going or sending them.
So if it is a non-conforming use, if it's in a setback, is it not considered a non-conforming use?
No, it's a use versus dimensions.
If you're in a setback. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. And if you're going to elevate it and add to it, it's an expansion of that. And therefore it goes to the Board of Selectmen. And as Peter said, if, if they don't like the Board of Selectmen, so they can appeal the administrative decision. That's why the layers are there. And then the appeal that goes to the ZBA, they say, we don't like what you said. Well, then they could go to the ZBA and file and appeal it.
I think Carol makes a good point, but you know, the use is legal. It's not an illegal use.
It's not the use that's the problem. It's.
It's the expansion dimension.
In other words, it's not a fireworks factory up there.
Too long, don't make it right.
Anyway, I'm trying to wrap my head around how I should be thinking about this.
I think you're in a side of caution. Let it go to the Board of Selectmen. And if they, if they don't like what the Board of Selectmen say, then they can appeal the administrative decision to ZBA, which is where it would end up anyway. So I mean, really just another layer of administrative decision.
Well, I mean, I guess we'll follow the town attorney's record.
Yeah, I haven't heard of making one yet.
What's that?
Do you make one now? Just thinking.
I think.
Are you ready to agree? I think, yeah. I mean, similar situation, if we send the Jocinskis to the Board of Selectmen, then future situations that are similar would have to go the same route. And if they're not encroaching further into the setback and making it more nonconforming into the setback, but they're just going straight up, then it's sort of a, just an increase in volume. And I think we treat future requests of that nature the same and send them to the Board of Selectmen under Article 3C3. And, and if the selectmen find that the expansion will have a different or detrimental impact on the neighborhood, then they'll deny it.
And not to discuss any merits of the case, but I believe that, and correct me, OJ, weren't we told that this pre-existed any zoning requirements and setback requirements at, at the time the house was built?
Yeah, that's true. It was compliant when it was built. And then the development came and wanted a bigger setback area and they, they had already built that.
All right. We got some information on the business. Anything else on this? You said paperwork for the land over there, Loon Bridge. What did you send us the other day?
Okay, I have, I'm going to have to spend, there's so much material. And I'll tell you, tell you what, there's, one of the Ds is not appeared to have been recorded. So the, you know, we're trying to track that down. One of these was, the other one wasn't. And then the whole package needs to go to the tax mappers. So I've sent off the stuff from the tax mappers, including the deed that we can't find the recording for. And I'm hoping that within the next day or two, that I'll have something from them so that then I can send the whole ball wax to. Because what's reflected on the tax maps, it's not accurate. It does not accurately reflect the agreement, the transfer of property under the, for the land under the bridge. There's a survey for a beach lot, which I have.
You got that survey?
I do have all the surveys. But anyway, so I'm hoping that I'll be, get that fixed so that then I can send you what is really supposed to be there.
Is that for both sides of the bridge or just the one side with it?
It's the one side, but they earned, they ended up owning more than we originally thought they did.
Oh.
So they, they ended up having, owning a lot more property on the town side.
Based on the land transfer? I mean, the land swap?
On the deed research that they did.
Oh, that, how'd that happen?
Whoever it is that did the work, I mean, Peter's office was involved. There were lots of attorneys involved. Right, Peter?
Yes, though Dave Hastings, my partner, who's a real estate lawyer, did the legal work for the town of Lincoln. There were a couple of attorneys from a law firm in Manchester, I think, or Concord, Concord called Nixon Peabody, representing Loon, I believe. And then there were some Florida lawyers involved as well. So yes, it was a, it was actually a very complicated series of transactions. I don't know who was responsible for that, recording that final deed that apparently hasn't been recorded. Dave Hastings is currently fishing in Alaska, so I can't ask him, but I will ask him when he gets back. And in the meantime, I asked my real estate paralegal to pull the file and try to track down the, Dave's a pretty meticulous real estate lawyer, so I suspect if it was his responsibility to record that deed, he would have done it. But we'll track it down and figure it out.
How big of a change is it from what was originally supposed to be?
Oh, see that large stack on the left over there?
The answer's in there.
Because the deed refers to maps. There was three maps. And I haven't seen copies of any of those.
Well, you'll get it in a few days.
All right.
And what does it have to do with the planning board?
Well, you, the members of the planning board had asked him to come in to talk about, you know, his parking. And, and part of that is the whole trans, moving the bridge, doing a land swap and then, and then finding out that Loon owned more land than we originally thought. Anyway.
So it's a little more land from before the agreement to.
Yes, from before.
From before the agreement to.
That's what, that's what my understanding is, yeah.
Would this be a better conversation to have after we find the deed?
After I get, I mean, get everything together. Get excited about it. Take it all in.
I'd just like to see where they own on the other side. I'd like to see where they own on the other side. I think that walkway that goes down here is down right away.
Anyway, they own a lot more land.
Does anyone have anything else?
I just got one more question.
Go ahead.
All these developments are already vested. When they do the water and sewer numbers, do they take that into consideration? I thought I read that somewhere once. They do. Raise them. Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? All right. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Mario.